Good evening and welcome to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three Conne Council, City Conneville. All rise, we pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Jenny Barrett.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor McCann?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for your blessings to our city, for your protection and provision. I pray tonight that you would bless this city council today. Bless this agenda. I ask that you would give them wisdom and knowledge and direction. Give them peace about the decisions that are made. And may your hand continue to rest upon our city. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Remind you, please turn your cell phone ringers off. We will begin with roll call.
Councilman Rob?
Here.
Councilman Gray? Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilman Warner?
Here.
Councilman Barrett?
Present.
Councilman Williams, Jr.?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Okay, everyone has their minutes on their January seventeenth regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those? Not entertain a motion to improvements.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We went on a new business. Chief Jones?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
It's about that time of year again. The assistance, uh, assistance to firefighters grants opened. Um, it opens for approximately thirty days. It's, it closes this Friday. Uh, this year, uh, we decided to try to replace our oldest truck that we have still in service. It's approaching thirty years of age. Um, I kinda gave everyone a brief rundown of the history of that truck and the letter that was in your packets. Uh, we've had that truck as, uh, John has it up on the screen. You can see, um, it's our shorter ladder truck that we've had. Um, for the majority of its service life, it's, uh, it's pretty much responded to every kind of call, every structure fire. Um, uh, several years ago, it kind of got replaced with a unused engine and put like in a reserve status. Uh, we still do use the truck, um, when it's needed. We don't use it as much as we did just because of the, you know, question of reliability. Um, you know, it's, it's getting serviced a lot more, a lot more maintenance. Um, that was gonna be the first truck that we were gonna attempt to replace once we got our capital replacement or improvement plan, uh, going. And, uh, we haven't been able to fund that yet, so we decided to try to apply for a grant to replace that this year. Um, I did reach out to three different companies to try to get quotes. Uh, two responded back, uh, one responded back with a quote in time, and it just so happens to be the company that, uh, made the old truck. And so it's more apples to apples, so it's basically the same truck, same size, same ladder, uh, just thirty years newer. Uh, the other two companies, uh, they had similar trucks. They were a little bit bigger, a little bit more expensive, um, but this is, uh, pretty comparable to the one I'd like to try to replace. Uh, the, the total price on the quote was eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh, FEMA requires a five percent match for a city our size, which would, uh, total out to be forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars if we were to get the award. That being said, uh, when we were working on our capital replacement plan, uh, I quoted that truck a year ago and it was a hundred thousand dollars less than it is now. So, that, you know, raises the question of, you know, this grant process, you know, lasts probably about a year or so. They're actually still awarding now for last year's grant. So, you know, it's hard to quote things nowadays. These companies quote something and, you know, if we were getting awarded in December, that quote's probably gonna be different. So, if we were to, I'm just bringing this up, you know, to let everybody know, you know, obviously matching the grant at five percent, but if, when, if we do get awarded that, uh, we go to the company in December and they're, and they're like, well, it's, now it's nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know, where that would have to be, you know, we would have to come up with that. Now, fifty thousand dollars is a pretty good price for almost a million dollar truck, but at some point in time, you know, we're gonna have to start, you know, replacing some of these. So, if we get lucky, uh, get this grant, that'd be great. Uh, the board of works, you know, approved pending, you know, monies for the match.
Well, I think you mentioned that we're not completely out of the running for last year, that they've
No, and those
Been declined yet.
Right, those, uh, that was for air packs. We're still crossing our fingers. Uh, we thought the, we thought that they were done, uh, awarding, and then Joe Lisa got notification that they were gonna award still through February. We still haven't got a denial, which is good, so, um, you know, hopefully we can get that and then we won't have to purchase those and, you know, that would, that would save us three hundred thousand dollars, so.
Is this particular truck, uh, one of the better ones, or?
Yeah, yeah.
I know that you, you said that it's the same company, but is the other
It's a good truck. Basically, this truck responded during the majority of its service life. This truck responded on everything and was considered, um, you know, we would have two engines and basically a ladder truck, which is what ISO likes to see respond to all structure fires, uh, to get, you know, all the, all your points for that category. Um, since we put that truck in reserve stat, reserve status, it doesn't respond like it used to. Now we respond with three engines, just because of the, you know, you know, the reliability of that truck and being concerned about it responding all the time, breaking down all the time. We do have the hundred foot platform ladder truck down at Station One, but it responds to large structures, uh, hospitals, schools, nursing homes, uh, structures like that. Um, if that truck went out all the time, it would get wore out, and that truck's probably a million and a half or better. So, this truck could potentially replace the old truck and possibly a newer engine that's at the same station that we've been having a lot of troubles, you know, a lot of trouble with. We bought an used engine that we've been having a lot of trouble with. So, if we were to get awarded that truck, it could take the place of another engine and possibly, you know, sell that engine and get, you know, a little bit of money out of it, but then we can get back to the two engine and one ladder.
What I'm referring to, those brands, is, it's this brand that you're looking at?
They've been making, they've been making fire trucks for decades, so.
There's one better than the others, is what I'm asking.
You know, it's, uh, anybody you ask is gonna give you a different story. Any salesman's gonna say their truck's better than others.
Right.
Um, Richmond, um, you know, I talked to them. I talked to the guys in Shelbyville. Richmond buys, um, Spartan apparatus. This is an E-one. Um, I did reach out to a vendor that sells Spartan and they were higher. Um, but it was a bigger truck too. You know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep, you know, come apples to apples and, you know, not, I don't, I don't wanna get in an area where I'm asking for something I think I'm gonna be denied for, is what I'm saying, so.
Now, if, if you, um, get this grant going on, can, can you lock them into this price?
Well, if we were to get awarded next month, maybe, but like
I mean, even if you tell them you're applying for the grant, they will
No, no company, no company is going to. It's like, the air packs that we applied for a year ago
Right.
Were fifty thousand dollars less than what they are now. Um, so, i- if they were to, if they were to, uh, hold this prize and we were to go to them in December, then, you know, they would, you know, potentially lose a little bit of money. That's, you know, ten years ago, we might've been able to do that, but you know, like today, you can quote anything and they're not, that quote's probably good for thirty days. Anytime I get a quote on just hose, uh, nozzles, uh, any other equipment, it's, it's good for thirty days after that, and that stuff's increased. I, I quoted some nozzles and I think they went at five hundred dollars from last year, so.
I mean, I, I get the prices increase and all that. I didn't know if a company would be, um, kind enough, so to speak, to, um,
That would be nice.
To bid, knowing that you were going to
Purchase it.
Get a grant.
Right.
Knowing that you're gonna purchase it.
Pretty much every company right now that's spitting out quotes is for this purpose here because, uh, departments all over the country are, are begging for quotes right now to apply for this grant.
Once you get the grant, you can secure a quote, a firm quote.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You can't do it till you get a grant.
And then, you know
Well, I figured as much, but I was just curious if
And they even tell you, you know, they're, they're gonna tell you, i- if you don't already assume, um, that, you know, there's a good chance if you're to get awarded in December, the price is gonna be a little bit different. Um, you know, obviously, they have to give you some kind of quote, otherwise you can't even apply for the grant. You know, you don't have any way, you know, and I can't, you know, inflate the quote to try to ask for more money. I gotta, I gotta apply for the amount of money that, you know, was in the quote, so, you know, it's, but like I said, it's still even, you know, even fifty, a hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket for a million dollar truck, but, you know, that's something that's out of my control. I just wanted to make sure everyone here knew that down the road, if, if we were to get awarded, you know, this, that, you know, the price could change, you know.
If this were replaced, you say this is, the one we have now is on reserve. If we were to replace it with this, would that increase our ISO score?
Yeah, that, that would be a first line truck, yes.
Yeah, so it would increase
You get, you, we would get more points in that category for, you know, for following that, you know, two engine, one ladder to every structure.
Okay.
Every decision we try to make drives ISO
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
People realize that it makes a huge difference.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a, that's a tedious process. I mean, you, you get half points for this, half points for that, and, but, but this would, this would fulfill that.
Is this a standard lifetime of the particular truck like this?
Well, uh, that being said, I did, uh, give you a copy of the NFPA recommendations. I'm glad you broke that up. Um, obviously, they recommend that, uh, after fifteen years of age, you put a, uh, apparatus into reserve status. You know, not every town or municipality could, that's not feasible for everyone. You know, that being said, they, they quote in several places that if you have a good maintenance program, which we do, uh, our trucks are, are maintenance very well, um, to make them last longer. Uh, and then obviously at the bottom of the page, they, they say that they recommend anything twenty-five years of age be taken completely out of service.
I think you've answered all my questions. Thank you.
The forty-four thousand, where are we taking that out of first?
I would recommend
Riverboat, possibly?
Recommend you taking it out of Riverboat.
Any other questions on that? I'm gonna slow down.
Okay.
You got one?
No.
No.
There's no more questions?
We'll take a motion to approve permission to apply for this assistance to firefighters grant.
And taking the, taking the match out of
Taking the match out of Riverboat, sorry.
It's gonna be in there.
Do we want to, should we put a, like a higher ceiling on it so that in case it is, we are approved and it's, um, to get any consideration, or just do it this way and do the addition?
I'm not really sure.
We can, we can make that call when, um,
Then.
When that comes up.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be approval of resolutions two zero two three dash zero two through two zero two three dash zero nine, Rosemary.
Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero two is a resolution to reimburse sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents into City Hall telephone. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three is a resolution to reimburse fifteen dollars into Cato telephone. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four is a resolution to reimburse eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents into police telephone. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five is a resolution to reimburse six thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents into police other contractual. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six is a resolution to reimburse two thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents into police other contractual. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven is a resolution to reimburse three thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and ninety cents into police other contractual. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight is a resolution to reimburse three hundred dollars into police telephone. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine is a resolution to reimburse a hundred fifty dollars into DOT vehicle repair.
Questions? Not entertain a motion to approve, uh, resolutions two zero two three dash zero two through zero nine.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item C, D, and E, pending ordinance three eight seven seven, Encumber Public Safety, three eight three eight seven nine, Encumber Airport, Rosemary.
These, uh, resolutions, I mean, ordinances are to encumber monies listed into those, um, funds. They're just contracts that we had, um, the material or products on order, and they just haven't come in and by encumbering it, it carries over the money from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Any questions? Not entertain, entertain a motion to approve pending orders three eight seven seven, seven eight seven nine, first reading?
Motion.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next we have approval of pending orders three eight eight zero, amendment utility non-bargaining salary order, Rosemary.
We have, um, adopted an employee handbook, and what this does, it just removes all the differences. Everything that's the same as the handbook, it is changing all the, taking out all the verbiage, and all the differences are listed out. So, it's just really starting to clean up, um, some of the ordinances.
Any questions? Not entertain a motion to approve pending orders three eight eight zero on first reading?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules. Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On the I M G, we are requesting permission to advertise for additional appropriations from Addit to General. Um, we'll go, kinda go through these. Um, I know we've been talking about this for a little bit. We've probably got some numbers where we wanna bring it in. I'm sorry.
That is the one we just did.
That was F. No, we haven't done the handbook yet. We're on G now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Um, the first one is request for two hundred fifty thousand on general, uh, for the startup funds for the tri-state food truck challenge. Right now, we got trucks, I believe, from nine states. We got truck coming all the way from Florida. We got enough trucks for fifty thousand people. Um, that kinda changed the game for us on what we wanted to do. Uh, so I've been talking to some brokers, on some bigger music brokers, to make sure we can get a larger crowd here, and a marketing firm to market between Indianapolis, Cincinnati, and Dayton, to really attract and draw a pretty large, I'm not gonna say huge, but a very large musical act to get peo- more people here as a draw. Uh, that requires some funding to do that. Now, that being said, that's a lot of money. It is coming out of the general, and so it had, does carry an interest policy with it, which is between eight and ten thousand dollars. Um, that way, if it does get rained out, we can collect and replace our money back in the general fund. Um, with that being said, it is, uh, at the airport, we're gonna do it, and the airport's gonna shut down the airport to do it. And with ticket sales, I kinda, you know, even at twenty-five dollar ticket, at ten thousand dollar people, you're break even. We are gonna have some drink sales, which is all we're gonna do, is we're, because the food's gonna be there, and some other stuff we can sell. Um, but with that being said, this is an opportunity to, if we get a bigger act, we'll get more than ten thousand people here. We got enough food trucks for fifty thousand people right now. Once we get a bigger name, line up for that, we confident those food truck sales are gonna go up, and then it'll just be an opportunity for more people to come. And there's plenty of space at the airport to do this. I think I measured a crowd, even if we add the fifty thousand, I mean, that's a big number, there's still plenty of room to do all that at the airport, so. Uh, with that being said, we would like to take the proceeds and the profit, anything above the two hundred fifty thousand, and we split that with the airport. They're looking to build some new hangars and stuff. They got a lot of projects they need to do. Then the rest go back in the general fund. I would like to use that money, if we could put it in the fund, but we can talk about that later, as seed money for doing more startups like this, so we can eventually get to the point where we don't have to utilize all this our own money, it becomes a self-funding project in the future. It takes a few years to do that, but that is the goal.
So, the event tickets are for the concert that night that you're planning?
I'm sorry?
So, the event tickets are for the concert, not
Just for the concert. What we'll do is we'll section off an area, we'll rent a big fence with a screening on it, and then to get in, you, you can pass back and forth, we're already working with the brokers how to do this, so they can get food and go back into the concert room. But there's a lot to this. You got that many people, you got a lot of bathrooms, you got a lot of parking, you got a lot of security, we're gonna have to hire a lot of security. Uh, there's a whole lot that goes into this, so it's starting to get a little bigger than what I was comfortable with doing personally, so I went, reached out to a couple of people who are, this is what they do for a living, uh, to help put this on.
How many people did, how many people did Rochefell have for their biggest one, where they had, where they had Fred's food trucks?
Three.
I wanna say six thousand.
I don't know the answer.
I honestly don't remember.
Five to six, maybe?
I knew the number, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
So, you're thinking we could pull how many?
On this?
Yeah.
It depends on what kind of act we get and how far we market it. My guess is, um, I think twenty thousand would be the easiest number to reach. That's where we're going after a bigger act, to draw that crowd in.
Right.
We've got enough food trucks to handle a lot more than that, and that itself's gonna be a draw. Cause we got, we got friends of Fred's doing, uh, our other event, Celebration of the Will, and just that event, they said they'll have three thousand people that follow them around just for that event. And that's
Twelve trucks?
Twelve trucks total, so maybe seven from there.
So, we got trucks from Florida coming up there. This is gonna be a big deal, and we're going after some major sponsorships too. This is, but this gives us a second, I can't go after a major sponsorship until I know who the artist is, so we got all this planned, so then we go after major sponsorships, marketing that three city area. We got a lot with Homeland Security to do. It's going to be quite a event. And the second one is for the, the request, uh, for the yearly bond payment. Do you wanna talk about that?
That's all.
That's it.
So, what questions do you guys have or comments or?
Are we already into any kind of commitments already?
Nope. I just got fifty food trucks coming.
Well, I think Amanda said this morning, like, sixty-seven.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
The food truck thing is a contest in itself.
It is.
Right. Do you need a motion?
This is just for advertisement. This is not for the Monday night, this is permission to advertise.
This is just an advertisement. I'll make them
The insurance policy would cover the two hundred fifty thousand?
Yep, yes.
If we get rained out and we can't have the concert?
Absolutely. That's why we want that. I didn't, wasn't gonna go into that money without, or go into that much money without some sort of insurance policy. Cause you can't control the weather, it's an outdoor event.
Right.
September, end of September, we've got better weather. I mean, the chances of severe is not real high into September. Every once in a while, you get a late season hurricane that makes it this far, but sometimes they divert before they get here, but I want an insurance policy in place to make sure.
So, advertising will do whatever?
Just
Not advertising, just, I mean, for Are you requesting it?
Right now, we're, we're requesting to advertise.
Advertise.
So, it'll be in the newspaper, and then the ordinance will go before you guys on, uh, March seventh to approve the amount.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
No.
Two noes.
Two yeses. Six yeses.
Four yeses.
Four yeses.
Five yeses.
There's one missing.
Oh, that's right. I'm gonna keep my mouth shut.
Okay, we'll advertise it in the paper. Approval of pending orders three eight eight one, uh, employee handbook updates. There's two updates that we have. I'm gonna get my notes. Uh, page thirty-one, it was, when we first did it, it was ten vacation days. By back, we put five, we're gonna move that back to ten. It affects us a few people. On page thirty-two, um, we're matching the holidays that we had already passed, but we have to update this every year as well, so eventually this will start replacing all the other ordinances.
And it'll reduce our salary ordinances as well.
It'll reduce, it's gonna take care of a lot of things. It's gonna take some time to get there. Any questions on that, comments? I'll take the motion to approve pending orders three eight eight one on first reading?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried. And the item I, uh, Rosemary's requesting removal of the twenty twenty outstanding checks.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item J, approval pending orders three eight eight two transient dealer. Um, I passed this out at the last meeting for everyone to read, give me questions and comments back. Um, this really started, Jay, when did we start this? Last fall?
Yeah, late fall.
Yeah, we get a lot of people that were just kinda going around and trying to sell stuff door to door, causing a lot of confusion, easiest way to say it. So, we started diving into our ordinances just to see what was out there. We had what was called a transient dealer. That's really all we had, and it, transient dealer is not, um, a true definition for peddlers and solicitors as well. It kinda mentioned it in our ordinance, but it didn't clarify or split it out, and this one here, we, Jay and I have been working on this for a long time. We split this out and got a clear definition. We have a clear line and path moving forward, how it's going to be handled and dealt with. Um, Luke Morris is here, he's my, uh, he's did some job shadowing with me, and he has built what the application will look like, which matches the ordinance, and what the, um, the license will look like. And we are looking at getting a, uh, embosser, so that once this is done, once it's paid for, we stamp it with the embosser, it's got the city seal on it, and it's, it'd be good to go after that, so. Did everyone get a chance to, I didn't hear any comments back, so I don't know, I didn't hear anything, I didn't know what anyone was thinking, so. I don't know, Jeff, you reviewed it, Javon reviewed it.
I, I have some questions on it.
Yes, sir.
And I understand what we're trying to do and I get that completely, so anything I say is not trying to tear that apart. Some ordinances require that these transient peddlers, merchandisers, dealers, or whatever you want to call them, if, if a residence has a sign in their yard, they're not allowed to, to get on their property and peddle their merchandise and there's a violation there of an ordinance. Some ordinances have, um, written in, in their ordinance that these people are only allowed to use the front door. And ours doesn't do either one of those. There's a question in my mind about yard sales. Some of this wording could be dictated as, um, you need a, uh, license to have yard sales and to wear service trucks, you know, such as tool trucks, um, uh, water supply companies that come and, and offer, water softening products on a routine basis. Are we going to exempt these people and exempt the yard sales? I mean, that's not in there.
That's not a tran- what, that's not a transient dealer or solicitor. A transient dealer who's someone who comes in and sets, they rent a building, facility, or location for so many days to set up shop.
Technically it is, if you, if you read the, the, uh, information on it. Then the other thing I have, several other things I have is, uh, I don't, most places don't charge a fee at all. Some do, but it's never as absorbent as what ours is. And I get these people are trying to make a living and I don't think that we should, I think we should have some kind of, uh, licensing, but I don't think we should put them in harm's way financially to have them apply.
I just pulled probably five or six ordinances and merged them together and this is, they were, some items were word to word, some of them were not, but I didn't see anything on there. Uh, that, most of the transit dealer dealership, or the language for transit dealers matched every one of them, peddlers matched every one of them. License and fees, I kind of hit the middle road, some were higher, some were a little bit lower, but most were around that two hundred and fifty doll- two hundred and fifty dollar range for the year. That's for an entire year.
And then, um, it doesn't cost anything for a police department to do a background check. In fact, they can't do an actual background check through N C I C and I D A C unless they have a criminal act going on and they, they have a case number. The only background check they can do is through the county records. So I, I don't see why we should charge a fee on that. Then we have exemptions. Nothing in here exempts the military people. It says law, but it doesn't dictate, it doesn't spell out what law it is. Usually we put the, the statute code in, uh, in our ordinance. So that's, that's not in there either. I think that's all I have.
What are you talking about with the military?
Yeah, they're exempt. By state law.
From what?
From this, from this ordinance.
Doing what?
From getting a permit.
Yeah, but what would they be doing?
I- if they want to, if they want to sell products door to door, and a military person, they're not, they're exempt from it. Some of the ordinances I've read spells that out on there also.
Are you saying a veteran can go door to door and they can't, they, there's a state law that says that they don't have to require a license?
Yes.
Do you know that section or anything?
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, do you know like what Indiana Code, oh, right there?
I never read one ordinance with any of that in there, so I don't know.
So any, so this says any veteran?
Veterans are exempt.
From paying a fee or from having to get a license?
Having to get a license for.
Corn, corn to that.
My biggest reason for doing this was citizen concerns about criminal background on things. So that was my main focus, um, but, Ray, I'm a good point with the military. I know he's looking it up, but Jeff, do you, is that something we can fix now or is that something we can address or need to address at a later date?
No, I'll have to rewrite this if, if that's the case.
Well, I mean, if we, I, I think we could, I think we could proceed with it and then just understand that they're not a part of it through Indiana Code. I mean, Indiana Code trumps an ordinance we have. I mean, I think we'd be okay to just say we, we understand that they're exempt.
I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's work in this, but I think we probably should wait until we put it in here like Hawaii. I would make a motion that we wait until Jeff is done making any corrections to it until, once he's done, we bring it back up.
I would agree with that.
Just to make sure it's, uh.
Is that, is that a second?
Yeah, if you want to, a second, yes.
Have a motion second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Know it's your baby and I didn't want to step on your feet.
I'm all for making sure it's right before we do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll hold that off till next time. And our business. New business. I'm sorry, miscellaneous business, says the wrong word. Bob, I came back from public, ready for your speech? No? Okay. Take a motion for a German.
So moved.
All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried.